Resilience and low carbon. My name is Nasha Lee, I'm from UNDP and I will be the moderator for today's special session. I'd just like to start by giving a little bit of an introduction and to highlight the key aims of this special session. Now, as we know, more than half of the world's population live in cities. And most future population growth is predicted to happen in our cities as well as our urban areas. The concentration of people and economic activity has so far always been a key driver for climate change. Cities are responsible for around seventy percent of global greenhouse gas emissions. That being said, they are also highly exposed to the many impacts of climate change, from storms to heat stress. And our cities in Malaysia are not exempted from this. Our average temperature, rainfall and sea level has all been on the rise in the last forty years and are projected to continue rising in the future to 2050 and beyond. Now, this brings additional climate risk to a large proportion of our urban population who live in vulnerable and low-lying coastal areas. We are no stranger to heavy rainfalls, floods and droughts, and these are expected to occur more frequently and at a higher magnitude in the future due to climate change. Now, as a country, Malaysia has a disproportionately high carbon dioxide emissions per capita, which is double that of Thailand and also even higher than China's. Malaysia's dependency on private transport is one of the highest in the world. Our industrial and economic growth in the past has meant that there are more factories, power plants, automobiles, which has rapidly escalated energy demands. And energy makes up almost eighty percent of emissions in Malaysia. That being said, cities are also where we can harness solutions to reduce emissions. And it's becoming increasingly real that the battle for our planet will be either won or lost in our cities. With that, today's special session, we are going to be talking about two different concepts. One is resilient cities. And that's cities that can survive, adapt and thrive in the face of any challenges, like climate change and amidst new challenges like COVID-19. The second concept that we'll be discussing today is about low-carbon cities. And that's cities that can contain the carbon footprint of its urban systems. And for today's session, our aims would be to shed some light on what a resilient and a low-carbon future for our cities could look like. And we have with us panelists, and I'm going to call them up soon, from diverse fields who will share with us a little bit of a realistic assessment of where we are and also the challenges and opportunities. And to highlight a little bit about where we need to be to both flatten the climate curve and strengthen the resilience of our cities and urban systems. Now with that, it's my great pleasure to introduce to you the opening speaker today, who is Dr. Gary Thesira. Dr. Gary is a senior research officer at the Forest Research Institute of Malaysia and also the technical advisor on climate action and sustainability at the Malaysian Green Tech and Climate Change Centre. And Dr. Gary brings with him more than a decade of experience on climate policymaking, communication and negotiation, both at the national and international levels. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Gary to the stage.
Thank you very much, Nasha. Young Bahagia, Dr. Nagul Endran, Deputy Secretary-General, Ministry of Environment and Water, CASA. Puan Olisa Hashim, Chief Executive of Urban ICE Malaysia. Mr. Norizal Kusayri, UNDP, Green Technology Applications for the Development of Low-Carbon Cities, GTA LCC. It's quite a mouthful. Distinguished panelists and participants, both here as well as online, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I am both honoured and humbled to have been invited to deliver some brief opening remarks at the start of this forum. Let me begin first by congratulating Urban ICE Malaysia for hosting of the Malaysian Urban Platform 2020. As a centre of excellence for urban wellbeing and sustainability in Malaysia, Urban ICE is well-positioned to serve as a strong advocate for urban sustainability across their four focal areas, namely: knowledge platforms, urban innovation, applied research and development, and projects and partnerships. On my part, the newly repurposed Malaysian Green Technology and Climate Change Centre, or MGTc, is pleased to acknowledge the contribution of Urban ICE in this area. And we look forward to deeper collaboration with Urban ICE toward achieving a sustainable and climate-resilient urban environment for all Malaysians. Distinguished participants, although the climate crisis is the outcome of an extremely complex interaction between natural carbon cycles of the planet and the accelerating emissions of greenhouse gases that are the hallmark of the economic and technological progress of human civilization, the facts in the matter are actually quite simple. The climate has changed in unforeseeable ways due to human activities. The global consensus, the scientific consensus, is that it will continue to change for decades, even if greenhouse gas emissions were to cease this very minute. And in this light, progressive developed countries continue to pressure developing countries into changing their development paradigms, encouraging them to dedicate finite development resources towards shifting to a low-carbon development pathways. In stark contrast, however, some of the richest developed countries continue to deny the existence of the problem and are even accelerating fossil fuel prospecting in newly accessible parts of the world, such as within the Arctic Circle, for possible future extraction. When the COVID-19 pandemic began in China, the world was ignorant of and therefore to a large extent unprepared for the global crisis that would follow. But the same cannot be said for climate change, which we have known about and studied for half a century or more. The problem is, unlike the COVID crisis, climate change is imperceptibly slow. Were it not for the historical record informing us on global temperatures in the past and the instantaneous notification of changing frequency of extreme weather events in the present, the average human being might not even perceive that the climate is changing. But now that we do know, we can plead ignorance neither to what is happening nor to what is needed to stop it and to reverse it. Distinguished participants, historically, cities have been the poster child for how to get it wrong, how to develop unsustainably. And there are many cities in the world where depressed economic and social conditions have combined with climate and extreme weather impacts to further degrade living standards and quality of life among those who are already vulnerable to its impacts. But there is a growing list of countries in which forward-looking planners, a vibrant civil society and bold political leadership are pushing the boundaries, challenging the norms and above all, dispelling the myth that our civilization is doomed to follow in the footsteps of numerous human civilizations of the past. How has this been accomplished? Well, in a manner of speaking, it has to be a kind of perfect storm of conditions. Firstly, we have to embrace learning from the mistakes of the past. Second, we need continued education at all levels and all ages. A culture of lifelong learning, availing ourselves of the latest information, techniques, information, technologies, best practices, how to get it right. Third, we need a willingness to challenge cultural and social norms about what constitutes quality of life. Is it a large, comfortable car? Is it an expansive home? Is it temperate conditions at the equator? Fourth, we need to invest in sustainability at all levels, from the individual to the household, all the way up to the federal government. And we need to do so across all sectors: food systems, mobility systems, the whole works. Fifth and most importantly, we need to put in place an ecosystem of affordable, accessible and effective alternatives to the unsustainable systems for which, in many cases, most of us still have no alternatives that are either economically or technologically viable. Yes, in doing this, we will make mistakes, as we have done in the past, but no mistake should be large enough to deter us from trying again. On the other hand, and almost more importantly, no success is too small because what we have learnt is that small successes compound globally and with time and will, I believe, move us inexorably towards a future Earth that we will not be ashamed to pass on to future humanity. Distinguished participants, I will end my opening remarks here because you have not registered to listen to me. The learned discussant, Mr. Norizal Kusayri, and the distinguished panelists, some of which I have had the distinct pleasure of working with, most ably moderated by Ms. Nasha Lee of the UNDP, whom I've also had the distinct pleasure of working with, promise a lively and informative forum this evening. And on my part, I'm certain that you shall have no less. I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gary, for that wonderful and insightful opening remarks. And I think one point that I really like to take away from your opening remarks is that, you know, we should never stop learning from mistakes of the past, from episodes of the past. And if we can compare the COVID and the climate crisis, I believe that there's so much that, you know, as climate practitioners, we can learn from the way that we tackle COVID-19, to early action, to learning from science-based policymaking. There's so much that we can learn about food security and supply chains to minimize carbon emissions. And so I think with that, that puts a really good frame to how we're going to frame this discussion today. And I'd like to invite all our panelists that are here today in person to kindly join me to take your place on the stage. Just to say also that we have three virtual panelists that are also joining us virtually. So this is really a hybrid kind of platform. I'm just wondering whether our virtual panelists are already connected to the platform? And can you say something? Hello? If you're there?
Hello, this is Alyssa.
Hi Alyssa, Jay, if you can hear me?
Hello, this is Jay Khan.
Hi, I think I'm hearing both Sophia and Jay, so great, that's great, and we have everybody online. So welcome again to today's panel discussion. I have with me here both physically and also virtually a very diverse mix of panelists who come from very different backgrounds, different sectors, but also in different fields. So we have policymakers, we have researchers, we have practitioners and industry experts. So without further ado, maybe if I can get our virtual panelists to mute themselves first? Thank you. And I'll introduce all the speakers that are here with us on the stage first. So we have Mr. Ashwin Turairaja, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Green RE in Diran Burhat. He has fourteen years of experience in building engineering sector and also experience in green development and low-carbon design. So welcome, Ashwin. We also have Dr. Sarenah Che Omar, who is the Senior Research Associate at the Kazana Research Institute. And her areas of interest are on policies related to food, agriculture and also sustainability. Welcome. We have Puan Rotina Binti Muhammad Daik, who is the Director General of the National Landscape Department of Malaysia. And she has progressively advocated for holistic and well-planned urban landscape development here in Malaysia. We also have Mr. Johann Sami, who is the co-founder of ServLCC. And he is someone who is very passionate about sustainable urban mobility and has also launched shared mobility services in a couple of cities in Malaysia and, as I understand, also outside of Malaysia, such as in Chiang Mai and Singapore. Welcome, Johann. And over at the very end there, we have Mr. Norizal Kusayri Mohammed Zamri, who is the National Project Manager for the Green Technology Application for the Development of Low-Carbon Cities. Yes, we know it's a really long name, but in short, it's the GTA LCC project. And I've had the great opportunity of working with Mr. Norizal on this particular project as well. And moving on to our virtual speakers, we have Mr. Jay Hao Chan, who is the Technical Director of Integrated Transport Planning Limited, affiliated also with Transit My, who is a transport planner and a mobility specialist with many years of experience in the full cycle of urban transport projects. Jay, if you can hear me, please wave and say hello. Oh. Jay? Okay, that's okay. Jay is joining us all the way from the UK today. We also have Sophia Castelo, who is the Lead of the Resilience Community of Practice from ThinkCity. She is a landscape architect and a senior program manager. And her area of expertise is in nature-based solutions for climate adaptation. Lastly, on our panel, but certainly not the least, we have Alyssa Raj, who is the City Advisor for C40 Cities. She is responsible for facilitating and developing a Paris Agreement compatible climate action plan for the city of Kuala Lumpur. Hi, Alyssa. I think we will jump straight into how we're going to structure this format. So we'll have presentations from all of our panelists, which will give you a very deep insight into their areas of interest on low-carbon and resilient cities. And then that will be followed by a panel discussion. And there will be the opportunity for you to ask questions also at the end. So for our participants who are in the room, you can ask questions at the end. And for those who are joining us virtually, you have the chat box function where you can ask questions at any time throughout this session. Now, we'll jump straight in into our first track, which is looking at the current situation in response to climate change and urban resilience. And in this particular track, what we want to know is where we are currently with regards to current opportunities and challenges for climate change and urban resilience. And I will introduce and welcome our first speaker, who will take over the stage, Ashwin Turairaja. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Nasha. Very good evening to Young Bahagia, Dr. Nagul Endran, Dr. Gary Thesira, all distinguished guests and panelists. And a big thank you to urbanists for inviting Green RE to be a part of this forum today. I'll go straight into my slides. Can you hear me clearly? Okay, to begin with, Planet Earth is having a fever right now. It's not because of COVID, but another dreaded seaworth, carbon dioxide. Akin to the Movement Control Order, we have a framework by which we can flatten the climate curve. And Malaysia is a signatory to this framework, known as the Paris Accord, whereby we have pledged to reduce our carbon intensity by forty-five percent from 2005 levels by 2030. Now, the built environment is a significant contributor to this total. Almost forty percent of all greenhouse gas emissions are attributed to the built environment, of which eight to ten percent is embodied carbon and twenty to thirty percent is operational. Now, what is embodied and operational carbon? Embodied carbon is the upfront carbon. It is the carbon implicit in the building materials, the construction process, the transportation of these materials to site before a building starts its use. Okay, the biggest contributors to this embodied carbon is OPC, Ordinary Portland Cement, which is a big, it's a very small portion of our concrete mix, but it is the biggest carbon impact. Cement and then steel as well. So combined, these two materials contribute to more than ten percent of all globally produced CO2. Operational carbon, on the other hand, is driven by the cooling and illumination of buildings, of which your air conditioning systems can be seen as the biggest contributor. About fifty to sixty percent of a typical office building's energy consumption comes from air conditioning. Now, we can see that energy use is the key denominator, both in the operational, the embodied sense, the production of OPC, the production of steel is very energy-intensive. So it makes a lot of sense to focus on how we produce our energy. So this is where we come to the Malaysian scenario. Currently, unfortunately, we are still very fossil fuel dependent. About eighty-five percent of our power generation mix is still fossil fuels. So we need to make a concerted effort to reduce this if we're going to have a chance to reduce our carbon impact. We have a national agenda to bring that figure, renewable energy, from where it is now, it's about ten percent to twenty-five percent by 2025. And we need to unlock our roof potential, you know, for solar if we're going to have a chance of achieving that target. Now, apart from changing the way we produce energy, we also need to look at how we consume it. And that is where energy efficiency should go hand in hand with converting to renewable energy. We can look at non-energy efficient buildings. We can sort of compare it to a leaky bucket. So we need to plug all the holes. It is the low-hanging fruit, really, in reducing the carbon impact of buildings. Okay, at a policy level, I think the Malaysian government is currently in the process of passing the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Act. This will enable the implementation of several sub-regulations, which will be a part of this act. And one of them is the Building Sector Energy Efficiency Regulation. The aim, the main aim here is to decouple economic growth with energy consumption. And this is one way, from a top-down perspective, to set clear empirical targets for the private sector to achieve. Okay, so we know that energy is something we need to focus on. When it comes to built environment, they tie very closely to energy. What are green buildings? This is where, what we are trying to push for. So green building is also a sustainable building. It is designed, built, renovated, operated and reused. That's another important word. It should be built to be resilient. It should be able to take on multiple functions. You shouldn't need to tear down one building and build another. There has to be a long-term aspect approach to how we design the buildings. And sustainable development is about maintaining the delicate balance between our need to improve and also preserving the natural resources and ecosystems that we depend on. So... Oh, right, okay. It's not clear, is it? Okay, ah, okay. I see you've not really been hearing me before this. Okay, so that's green buildings. And there's another concept called the zero-energy buildings. This is something that SEDAR is pushing for, and this is the definition that is used when we talk about zero-energy buildings. We have ZEB ready. That means you have fifty percent of more energy savings from the baseline. The baseline here is actually a voluntary national standard, MS1525 for commercial buildings and MS2680 for residential buildings. So we have a baseline, fifty percent of more energy savings via ZEB ready, seventy-five percent or more, it is nearly ZEB, and hundred percent or more savings. That means your building is effectively net zero, then it's called a zero-energy building. I'll come back a little bit more to these terms a little later. Okay, so we, green buildings and Green RE, which is the entity that I'm heading, we have developed a framework by which we can objectively assess buildings as being green. So the important thing is that you are able to objectively and transparently compare various buildings through a proper framework. So we allow you to measure, disclose, communicate and act on the necessary data. And this is a private sector-driven initiative. Our standards are actually benchmarked to the Singapore Green Mark standard, which is an internationally recognized green building tool. And these are the major pillars that we look at. Apart from energy, energy is the main focus. But beyond that, we also need to look at water efficiency, our carbon impact, our environmental protection, the type of materials that we use, site selection, the amount of greenery that we incorporate into the building, and of course, indoor environment quality. Okay, driving the sector forward, the World Green Building Council has actually set ambitious targets, which should be a priority here in Malaysia. By 2030, they would like to see all new buildings, infrastructure renovations, to have at least forty percent less embodied carbon with significant upfront carbon reduction. And by 2050, all new buildings, including existing buildings, should be net-zero operational. Our neighbours, Singapore, have put this firmly into their policy direction. They want all low-rise buildings in Singapore to be positive energy, not just net zero, but to be a net contributor. Medium-rise buildings to be net zero and high-rise buildings to be super-low energy. This is the nearly ZEB per SEDAR's definition. Now, to achieve this, both push and pull forces need to increase. I think we do have some policy direction through legislation. We do have voluntary standards. We do have certification bodies like ourselves in the private sector. But there needs to be more of a pull factor as well. I think the end user should see this as something that you want. It should be, you know, if you ask someone who is buying a building or buying a property or renting a property, what's your top five items that you consider? I think being green is not even in that top five. So that is something that really needs to happen. And that's the only way we can push for higher standards and improve all elements that go into building construction. Okay, and lastly, I think we have to keep this quick. So why? Why do we need green buildings? Why do we need to move in this direction? I think these are a few points that we have put forward. We can alleviate the threats of climate change, improve the resilience of our infrastructure. We can improve our nation's competitiveness, you know, by reduced energy use per capita of GDP. We can improve the quality of life and social wellbeing, reduce our overall greenhouse gas emissions, promote economies of scale for more technologically efficient products and encourage higher-value services. And of course, to encourage overall sustainable business decision-making. Consider, we should be considering the overall life cycle and adopt the circular economy in all our decision-making. All right, with that, I will end my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ashwin. I think it's really, it's really something to note that we spend so much of our time every day in buildings. And there's so much opportunity for us to actually make our buildings greener and also cleaner and also more low-carbon. So I think with that, I'll pass the floor to Dr. Sarenah, who will be talking to us today about food security.
Okay, Tess. Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you to the organizers for inviting me to this panel. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got five minutes. And I've decided, within this five minutes, I'm going to change the way you think about food and agriculture. So I'm going to start by sharing with you something. For your information, agriculture only contributes about seven percent to our GDP. Now, that is not a lot because if you think about services, it's about fifty-seven percent. If you think about manufacturing, it's about twenty-one percent. So over the years, agriculture has contributed a small part to our GDP. And what has happened is that because it's small, naturally, everyone in Malaysia tends to take food and agriculture for granted. Because we are like, Allah, GDP is so small, it's a sunset industry. We want to move forward with technology and services. So, you know, let's not bother about agriculture and food. But ladies and gentlemen, that is the big mistake that I think. Because it is not about the contribution to GDP, it is about this. Have you heard about Maslow's hierarchy of need? Hierarchy of need is, if you look at right at the bottom, the most basic need of a human being is to have food. Now, if we take away food today, there's going to be riot tomorrow. So don't need to worry too much about the self-actualization, esteem, relationship. If you do not fulfill the most basic need of human being, particularly in this case, we want to talk about urban resilience, you've got to be able to address issues related... you got to be able to address issues related to food and food security. So what is food security? A lot of people come up to me and say, Serena, you know, we are importing a lot of food, you know, should we be worried? Should we be producing our own rice? You know, everything is import, import, import. There's a lot of worry in terms of, can we be self-sustainable? Which means can we produce everything that we need within our system? I want you to understand something about food security, ladies and gentlemen. Now, food security, this is a definition by the World Food Summit, is that it exists when all people at all time have physical and economic access to safe and nutritious food. Don't worry too much about the definition, it's a lot of mumbo jumbo. But what it means is that it goes beyond just producing food, right? So it goes beyond just the issue of import and export of food. People ask me, why can't we be like Thailand or Vietnam, we export a lot of food? Well, there are many issues besides just exporting and importing food. There's also an issue about can you afford it? There's also an issue about is the food safe? There's also the issue about sustainability, which means if I plant rice, but I'm use so much chemicals that I can't plant rice in the next season, that's a, that's an issue. And the lastly is stability, supply chain. If there's a volcanic eruption tomorrow, it is, it is still a food security issue. In another words, I'm going to take you on a little imaginary journey, okay? I want you to imagine that all the rice that is required by thirty-one million people in Malaysia, let's just say for argument's sake, can be produced in Langkawi. But what if the ferry from, from Langkawi Island to the mainland is broken? It's an access issue. So you in K L cannot access rice. So even if you can produce all the rice, if you can't access it physically, it is a food security issue. Now, even if you can arrive to Kuala Lumpur, but you cannot afford to buy that rice, it is a food security issue. Now, what if the food can arrive to Kuala Lumpur, you can afford to buy rice, but ala ma, nobody taught you how to cook rice. So you can't cook it. If you can't cook it, you can't absorb the nutrients, right? And most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, something that we've always taken for granted, if you can cook rice, but you only eat rice, no chicken, no vegetables, no fruits, it is a nutritional issue, therefore it is a food security issue. So I want you to change your mindset. Number one, it is not just about importing and exporting food. Just because we can produce all the food that we need in K L, for example, it doesn't mean we are fully food secured if we do not address all the dimensions of food security. And of course, there are other things, and I always tell people, it is a food security issue as well. If you can have all the food in your doorstep, but you serve your kids Maggie me and chicken nuggets, it is a food security issue. So I leave it at that. So in terms of urban resilience, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to address food security, you need to address the multi-dimensionality of food security. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Serena. I think it's really what you mentioned about food security being multi-dimensional. It's really a very important point, and I'm going to make sure that I remember that tonight as I eat my dinner. Okay, I think moving on, we'll go to Rotina, who will be talking to us today about landscape and also about nature-based solutions.
Thank you, Ms. Nasha. Distinguished guys, participants, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm honoured to be here today and pleasure to join all of you today in Malaysia Urban Forum. Thank you, urbanies, for inviting National Landscape Department. I think I have five minutes. I have a lot to share, but I try to make it simple. As we know, the concept of urban resilience has become a, an important connotation for the local and global development agenda. Today, everybody is talking about urban resilience from different perspectives. I'm sharing with you the concept of urban resilience from the perspective of landscape architecture and how we can capitalize on the potential of landscape development to mitigate the problem of climate change. National Landscape Department, since its establishment in nineteen ninety-six, has been given the mandate and responsibility to spearhead the country landscape development towards realizing national vision of making Malaysia a beautiful, guided nation. This vision was initiated to make a country that strive for physical development balanced by green, well-managed, clean and beautiful landscape with the aim to create a vibrant, healthy and enriching public spaces to live and to work. At the same time, ensuring these spaces are at their best quality, conducive, functional and cost-effective. To this day, National Landscape Department has taken of several steps and initiative for professional approach to resolve the problems related to climate change, especially on the issues of increasing temperature in urban areas, degradation of natural habitat, loss of biodiversity and other issue related to greenhouse effect. I'm glad to note that in twenty eleven, the National Landscape Policy was launched as a comprehensive guide to determine the directions of landscape development, formulated with the aim to sustainably transform and revitalize not only the physical landscape of Malaysia, but also to calculate the appreciation of landscape in Malaysian public. The importance, the trust of the policy emphasized on the importance of natural landscape preservation and conservation. This effort is emphasized in order to earmark the character and identity and the significance of a place. Most of the program implemented are directly related to the, to localizing the global agenda that is S D G eleven, thirteen and fifteen. Among the tasks is to ensure Malaysian cities has an agreed amount of green area and public spaces to meet the existing and future community needs. Till date, seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three public parks of various hierarchies have been developed. I think many of us are not really aware that we have built a lot of parks. But in terms of urban resilience, how can this park help to mitigate flooding and other climate hazard? Besides having a clear policy, other programs introduced to combat issues related to urban degradation are including increasing in green coverage by the city. Planting more trees is also an action that help to tackle climate crisis. I think planting trees, as we know, is the most, is the easiest way to increase, to reduce the carbon, because planting trees can be classified as a carbon drawback program, low-tech, easy-assess solution where it can be done by the society. Tree planting campaign, vertical green project are among a few projects implemented in our cities. Studies and action plan to intensify the development of large escape park, vertical gardens, preservation and conservation of protected areas and natural landscape is also being set out. Having said that, moving forward, nature-based solution that is by designing more large escape park in the cities to mitigate natural disasters such as flooding need to be looked into. Large escape park can be designed as a water retention area and at the same time as a recreational area. Wetlands, natural landscape area around the cities need to be preserved and enhanced. And it rose as, it rose and function as an eco-tourism area need to be promoted. Rivers and stream should flow naturally, while wooded and recreational area along the riverbank should be encouraged. Continuously evoke tree planting program at all levels to ensure qualities of trees that we plant. I think most of us are planting trees, but the quality of trees need to be ensured. It has certain quality because not all trees that are planted in our cities are actually suitable for the cities or the space that are allocated for. So the quality of trees is important, as well as the maintenance program need to be given priority. Priority should also be given for developments of more walkways and cycle path within the cities that connect people. Let work to make our ground permeable again. Simultaneously, this effort can enable us to adopt a sponge city concept where this concept has been modeled by most of the city around the world and other design green infrastructures such as green roof. I think we have seen just now, the, the, one of the building that have built the vertical wall, the green vertical wall, rain garden, green street and park can offer similar roles to increase the greenery in the cities. Embrace diversity, multiple use and minimum footprint for development, as well as multidisciplinary and multi-agency approach need to be ahead. Because I think as we can see, different agency have a different approach, but the same purpose. There are a lot of duplication between agencies, ministries, local government. And I think with that, we are actually facing the resources that are scarce, but we don't really achieve our objective because everybody touch a little bit of everything. So we need to work together collectively, collaborate between agencies, local, local authorities and government department as well as private sectors to ensure the, the development of green in the cities and also in our country will be focused. And finally, cities authority should be empowered to find nature-based solution in facing their challenges in creating urban resilient and low-carbon environment. With that, I term my present, I end my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think if we can move to the next speaker, which is Mr. Jay Hao Chan. If you are connected, please, you have the floor. Is, is Jay connected? Oh, hi, Jay. Can you unmute yourself, please? We can't hear you. I think we're just having some audio issues. Yeah, Jay, if you can try to speak again. Okay, let's try to sort that out. And I think maybe we can go to the next speaker first, Jay, and we'll come back to you after this, okay? Yeah. So we'll go to, next to Johan, who will be talking to us today about urban mobility.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So I've got a very big topic to talk about today is transport innovation and how it affects urban resilience and low carbon. I'll try to do in five minutes, as usual, just like everyone else. Look at this picture, you know, look at this video actually. And you can see that happy people cycling and in the streets, taking chilling, taking their time, you know. Life is good, looking at this, as compared to where we are today. We are pretty far off from where they are. And we, of course, we wish that, we wish to have this. But please bear in mind that they weren't like this thirty years ago. So it took them like thirty years to get to where they are today. And that's what we try to achieve here in Malaysia or in Southeast Asia. We want to be, we want to move the urban civilized, I will say civilized, the urban culture towards that, yeah. So, here we go. All right, so if we look at low carbon and urban resilience, the first thing that comes to our mind would be walking, cycling and riding, which is we are all very familiar with. And we know what's the benefits of having a low-carbon mode of, of mobility. Okay, the first benefit that's most obvious to all of us is that it's affordable, it's good for your health, it cuts down congestion and as well as no pollution, right? We are minimizing a lot of carbon emission to the air. But again, what's stopping us from doing this? The pains, the pains of the effort, right? So we are in a, we are in a society that we are very car-centric, okay? So take a look outside again. And of course, I would like to also ask a show of hands, how many of us actually took public transportation and walked here? For example, wow, there's quite a few, great, awesome, right? And most of us, okay, in Malaysia, and this is based on the findings that I've done so far, getting involved in the micro-mobility sector and with the public transportation system within the Southeast Asia. I've gone to countries to countries, being exceptions in Singapore, that most other people would avoid walking or even riding a, riding a bicycle or even an e-scooter is because of one thing is the effort is required, right? And also that they consider it slow because the distance they need to travel using this mode of transportation from one, from one point to another point. And of course, most importantly, there's no excess. Now, let's look at conventional. I actually skipped one slide before this. There was one slide that actually showed what's the conventional that we use. Or we look around the Southeast Asia region, right? For each cities that we, that you, you visit, you'll find that each of this city will have their own mode of transportation. Very interesting one. You have the Tuk Tooks, you have the Ojacks, you have the Blue Tins, you know. And each of them actually offer their own micro-mobility, what do you call that, a solution, okay? And people are willing to pay for them, okay? Why do they willing to pay, why are they willing to pay for this? Because of instant gratification, I would call it. So it's convenient, it's right there, it's just outside, okay? You open the door, there is a service there waiting for you, okay? It's fast, yes? Traffic jam, ride a two-wheeler, motorbike gets you from point A to point B, very fast and accessible as well. But of course, there are pains here as well. The pains of every month or every day you're spending money on transportation. It has an effect on your health because you don't exercise. We don't exercise that much because if we don't, if we don't walk, right? So we, it's always like the only exercise we do is actually getting ourselves into the car, on the bike and getting out. That's the exercises, also sit-ups, like doing sit-ups, yeah? And of course, you're out most immediately, we can see the congestion as one of the pains. It's not just to the person in the car. Well, if you're sitting in a car, you will really feel it, accept that time kind of drags. But thanks to technology today, we have a mobile phone, we can work on, you know, watch some YouTube video in a jam. And of course, pollution, right, is in the air. So what we have done is that we want to encourage low carbon. So we take away the pain points of both mode of transportation. Low carbon pain, that means that, hey, you know what, it's going to be effortless, it's going to be fast, you know, for you to, to travel from point A to point B. And at the same time, we're adding in the benefits, okay, of using a conventional model. So blink again, right? So it's going to be convenient, fast, accessible and tangible, very tangible benefits. And of course, we added in the intangible, something of like, you don't see immediately, but you know, you, you will feel the effect of healthier, you know, and it's affordable, right? Put these two together and you have, voila, high adoption rate, right? So we would like to think that. So for the last two years, I've been doing this, okay? We've been trying to get up the, the devices, right, that, that we want to put on the streets, okay, to be affordable. We want to make it convenient for them, we want to make it fast for them. But that's not usually the case, right? So why is that? So we look at how the city is built, okay? So if you look at that, we call it this fifteen AM city. So the fifteen AM city here, it could be a fifteen million city, population city, but it's not actually, right? But look at the destination, okay, from your home to the nearest, for example, cafe, to your supermarket, to your school, to your workplace, okay? Right now, we are looking at anything between ten to fifteen KM, that is the distance. It's not a walkable side distance, definitely not walkable. Even if you're running, if you're practicing for a marathon, every day if you go, you do thirty kilometers around, that is could be quite a stretch, right? Cycleable, yes, but of course, but when you have a fifteen kilometers city, right? It takes a lot of effort to cycle. You are exposed to a lot of safety issues, hazard on the roads and so on, so on. So what we have, what we're looking at here is to remove the fifteen-kilometer city and we call it, make it a fifteen-minute city. So that means in anywhere within the city itself, it's reachable within fifteen minutes of walking or cycling. So that is one of the ideal situation that, or a, a, a development that we were trying to create, okay? So anything, everything that we need or, or point of interest that we are looking at, that we want to go to, okay, is within fifteen minutes' reach. And anything that is beyond the fifteen-minute range, there is the MRT, public transportation to bring us, to carry us from point A to point B. And of course, a shuttle service, a highly efficient shuttle service within the fifteen-minute city that will bring us, that will bring like, for example, the elderly, the disabled, you know, the people who are not healthy maybe to walk on that day, you know, they can use the very high, the efficient shuttle service to commute within the city itself, the fifteen-minute city. And of course, what's more interesting is that adding on to the services of bicycles and scooters as well to assist or to provide alternative mode of transportation, okay? Now, you can see here, there are a lot more other little icons here. What we have is, it's not just adding bicycles and scooters, but we're talking about a sharing services. Sharing services whereby people can use it at their convenience, providing accessibility and also high availability. There is also like providing a platform whereby, you know, people, commuters can actually have access to bicycles. That means creating more shops and opportunities, economy opportunities to be sustainable. And also to provide services like for several bike repairs or scooter repairs for this, for this mode of transportation. And also an app, that app that actually help users to actually, to see, to, to have access to this, this platform. So what we, what we have done so far is shrinking the city down to fifteen minutes, providing the availability, providing the accessibility, the mode of transportation, the app, an app for both users and also we are stimulating the local economy as well, the community economy here to move towards a sustainable economy. And so, and what else have we done? So this is something that we have done, that we are working with Urbanist Malaysia to come up with a blueprint, the blueprint of a climate-responsive mobility platform. So there's a lot of boxes here, but just to show you how complex is this, the system is. And we had the opportunity, SURF, LCC and also together with Urbanist to work on this platform and to make it a reality. And that's not all, okay? Making this blueprint a reality is not the end of the story. So what's the last equation to make this happen is the changing of mindset. So like I asked early on, how many of us actually walked here or took a public transportation walk here? That is change of mentality that some of us have. But majority, okay, because we are very much in the car-centric society, we tend to drive, right? So now, this is the next step of changing, of making low carbon and urban resilience. Where urban resilience happen is to actually change the mindset. So we need to create a cue for them, okay? So how, when do we start? How do we get this habit moving, okay, changing into a new habit? By creating a routine for them, okay? A routine to start using walking or cycling as a mode of transportation. And we reward them, providing a reward. So this is an instant gratification, right? A carrot, okay? If you do something, you get a carrot, if something good, you get a carrot, right? But there's no cane here, it's only a carrot, right? So, and we repeat. So by creating a good habit, if you want to create a good habit or a habit, right? It takes you, you have to repeat it for ninety days, they say. So by doing it for ninety days, you create a good habit and then you, you carry on with you. So in this case, what we're doing is that we're creating a good habit for people to actually walk and cycle and we will reward them, right? And if the reward is very good, they will repeat it even more. So for example, so you'll be wondering, what, what am I talking about? What's just Johan talking about, about this reward system, you know, people walking? Okay, you want to walk and you want to cycle and all, right? So that's the introduction to active life. So in a short while, my colleague, Arif, from SURF, as a founder of SURF, will be, will be talking more about active life. So in a nutshell, active life offers rewards, okay? And it's targeted at urban, I would say, the younger folks, okay? The students, the university students, for example, young working adults, okay? Those people who are very keen, who are very interested, very geared up to, to win rewards, okay? Like for example, you know, if you clock at X amount of, of walking and cycling kilometers and you save X amount of carbon and you win and you get a certain number of points, okay? The highest among them will actually, will win an e-scooter, for example, right? So they would game for it, they would say, wow, okay, why not, let's go for it. And then you see like the entire team or the entire campus of students, instead of riding their motorbikes, you know, or driving in, in the campus itself, they just get off the car and they start doing the activities together. So that, and that creates encouragement as well among themselves, okay? Encouragement to, among them to actually go for a change, okay? Of course, initially, they would just think about, they would think about the reward, okay? But subconsciously, what it's doing is that is creating them, making them to change. And then they will look forward to a reward every week, every month or even a quarter, you know, in a quarterly basis. You know, there will be more rewards to be offered. So this is also not just an app. This is something that, you know, can be collaborated, okay? With organization companies, you know, that want to make an effort to move towards carbon neutral. So they can actually organize their own competition within the, within the company or within the campuses or even within the cities, within communities, right? So they will each compete, you know, to see who else can achieve the carbon neutrality, yeah? So I think that covers it, the multi-layers of how to achieve urban resilience from the city point of view, right down to the devices, the available mode of transportation and then towards the, oh, I've got a timeout already, okay, cool, alright, alright. So, okay, and right down to individual change. But today, the most important part we're talking about is changing behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Johan. I think when your slide came up, it was on transport innovation. And I think many of the people in this room as well as those joining virtually probably would think that, okay, transport innovation, Johan is going to talk about technology or infrastructure. But I think you talked about user behavior and understanding that and incentivizing that. So I think that that's something that's really important to really understanding the complexities of why users are not taking up the solutions that we are prescribing them. I think really understanding user behavior and trying to incentivize that is a really important step that we all need to, to learn and to do. And I think maybe if I can move on to our virtual speakers. First, we can go to Sophia Castello from Think City and then also to Alisa Raj from C40 Cities. And then we'll go to, lastly, to Jay from ITP. So we'll start with Sophia, please.
Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Sophia.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Urbanist, right? I'll be introduced in case of Penang, regarding urban resilience and its impacts. So we know the world is already impacted by climate and dramatically is projected for those major cities in KL. We also know that Malaysia is particularly vulnerable to climate impacts as geographic, Southeast Asia is one of the three world which will be hardest hit in the near future, together with Sub-Saharan Africa and India. The main impact will be in weather events, leading to flooding, causing heat and impacting property and overall well-being. I'm trying to, this is from the World Organization in fifteen. This is specific for Malaysia. And it shows that while in nineteen eighty, we had twenty days with waves, by twenty fifty, the country will have a hundred days per year of heat waves. So it is absolutely essential to define sources of adaptation and to implement them. Think City is developing the first municipal climate adaptation program to be developed in Malaysia. The nature-based adaptation program for the urban areas of Penang Island together with UN Habitat and ADPP and multiple, multiple other institutions, including Onsite Research and the National Government. So the main four issues that we are addressing, heat stress, in which we will be planting strategically, planting trees and green spaces to try to minimize impact of the extreme one point five to like two, twenty, twenty thirteen. And also reducing flooding, developing upstream retention projects as there is estimate of fifteen percent of increase in the volume of rainfall. This has happened since nineteen eighty and is estimated to continue in the future. Also in terms of social vulnerability, we have programs to address disproportionately impacted groups. And in the institutional capacity, it is very important to make hospitals in Malaysia do not identify heat stress or heat stroke. So officially, there are no deaths by heat stroke. There are other components of our institutional capacity program, including the creation of a knowledge management platform to main stream. So we can see here, this is remote, on surface temperatures using Landsat eight. And we can see here that the minimum temperature has increased two point five degrees. The maximum temperature has increased seven point four degrees between nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and nineteen. We can also see, we are using thermal imaging beyond remote sensor assess temperatures. We get the impact of greenery and trees, particularly street tree, on reducing temperatures. So this is obviously for Penang City, but it applied to others in Malaysia. Here, a shaded street, forty degrees, surface temperature. But the non-shaded degrees in the same day, just less than one hour after, has almost thirty degrees of increasing surface temperature. So we can see the potential impact of these strategies in order to reduce threats to public well-being. In terms of goals, again, not specific. Ours is a science-driven program. We assess the results yearly and make them available in a knowledge platform, the knowledge transfer platform. So we thought, we are proposing to reduce one point five degrees by reducing urban heat island effect in all urban areas in Tomokins, in Penang Island. We are proposing to also, flooding events, eliminating them. With a partnership with the Johan Venture Research Centre for Sponge Cities in China. And that actually eliminated completely flooding cities they have intervened. In terms of vulnerability, we are strengthening social resilience for particular groups so they won't be as impacted as without support. And in terms of institutional capacity, we develop a pilot project for detection of heat and heat stroke in a public hospital in Penang. We'll create the knowledge management platform and we are developing a climate resilient pre-study for Malaysia together with Javatan Landscapnet. These are just some illustrations of our projects for green spaces and for flood management using nature-based solutions, blue corridors, introducing swales and upstream retention areas. Basically, it comes reducing temperature, reducing income health, reducing flooding and GDP losses, reducing vulnerabilities and improving community readiness. And again, all impacts will be assessed and made available to all other cities in Malaysia. Finally, it was an honor to win the International Climate Cities Award for which it was shortlisted together with Miami, Paris, Dublin and Salvador. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophia, and thank you for sharing the work that Think City is doing in Penang. I think that's a lot that we can learn from to also expand to other cities in Malaysia. Next, I'd like to move to Alisa. Alisa, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, everybody. I will try to keep this within three minutes if possible, so thank you very much. Very quickly, basically, I'm from C40 Cities Climate Initiative Group and we're an organization that works as a network of cities to provide cities support in order to actually develop climate action plans mostly, but also define solutions. So as part of Deadline 2020 program, which Kuala Lumpur was a signatory for, they are receiving funding in order to actually produce their own climate action plan. I'll just skip through first. So I'm sorry about the slides, I think the format is a bit funny. But basically, our climate action plan is aligned to achieve the Paris Agreement targets. And Kuala Lumpur, as I mentioned earlier, being a signatory of Deadline 2020, is aiming is aiming to achieve carbon neutrality by 2050. So we've got four key components. The first one being mitigation. So this is actually our carbon emissions reduction targets of achieving carbon neutrality by 2050. The next item or next component that we're looking at is also adaptation. Building resilience against climate hazards. So we know that the earth is changing. We know that KL is already feeling the impacts of climate change. How are we now going to make sure that we can actually adapt towards it? Because even if we put the break now, it's still going to change a little bit more. So we really need to prepare for this. The third component, if you notice, is basically climate, inclusive climate action. So here, we're really trying to identify the impact of our actions on people. How we can actually try to have positive impacts and spread these positive impacts, if possible, to vulnerable groups as well. So how are we taking this into account? What can the council do? Of course, the most important component of all is really governance and collaboration. I think in Malaysia, with a slightly unique structure for local governments in which they really require a lot of collaboration with agencies, institutions, you know, national government, the community as well. So these are the four key components. And why did I bring this up? I just wanted to highlight in my next slide, basically, a few key lessons that we've learned along the way. This program is being run in a few different countries. Mostly developing countries have received funding. So across Southeast Asia, KL is one of five cities that has received funding. And we've really come to realize that each city has a really different context. So we really need to address the political structures, the cultural structures in order to really come up with a climate action plan that is going to achieve our really ambitious targets, because our targets are very ambitious. In terms of really setting the place. So in Kuala Lumpur, we may be, we may have more control over pedestrian infrastructure. So mobility or active mobility over specifically public transportation services. So what can the council do to improve this, for example, is something that we should focus on. And then we should also make sure that we are addressing the gaps that we are beginning to identify. So based on the situation in KL, I think many, many speakers before me have already mentioned there's really a lack of data in some areas. Or sometimes the data is there, but it may not be in the form that is easily usable, number one. Number two, you know, it may be that the data is there, but it's not understood by certain groups within councils, within different levels of government. And therefore, it makes it very hard to act upon this. So really building up capacity as we go along is very, very important because we do find that federally, there's a lot of information. Locally, the information is there, but it may not be translatable if the capacity is slightly lacking. I think the third point that we really find is a challenge and an opportunity is tracking and accountability. Councils everywhere are doing so much and KL is no exception. There's so many programs being run, but there's very little tracking of how these programs are run, what the actual impact is long term, how can we improve this? And at the same time, because there's a lack of tracking, there's also a slight lack of transparency and accountability as well. How are we being held accountable against our own targets? My fourth point is really vertical and horizontal integration. It is so important in Malaysia because, as I mentioned earlier, we have the gaps of capacity where we know federally, there's a lot of research being done on climate change, adaptation, the data is all out there. But then it's not really making it into action plans. It's not really making it into master plan level plans or development guidelines yet. So making sure that we're communicating with agencies. In some cases, local authorities or local governments have the power to set policies. In some cases, they don't. In some cases, they can implement. In some cases, they can't. But making sure that each of this, you know, federal, local, state, as well in some cases, governments are all aligned and it's being communicated to the public as well. That is so important. But at the same time, horizontally too, with different agencies, is it being mobilized? Can it be mobilized? Are we having these conversations where we know each other's targets and are therefore able to go towards a similar goal, rather than, oh, I want that to happen. Okay, make it happen. So we need to make sure these conversations also take place as part of the process. I think, I know it's very fast, but I'm open to more questions later. I just want to make sure the last speaker gets time to talk. But my final comment is basically, change is pretty much imminent. I think whether we like it or not, the floods from two weeks ago in KL was a clear sign that the climate is changing, the rainfall patterns are changing, the locations of rainfall is changing. So we really do need to prepare. And how best can we do that from our council, our area? That is different from city to city, but we have to take action. With that, I will pass the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, Alisa. Jay, we see you've joined us again. Jay, please come in.
Yep, can I hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Alright, fantastic. Can someone upload the presentation slides? Yeah, let me start, start quickly. I just, I just want to capture from what Alisa said earlier on. A very good afternoon to everyone. I guess my, my experience earlier on, this, this afternoon, what was, was a clear case. Next slide, please. A clear case of how important it is to have a resilience in terms of to prepare for, respond and recover from the face of hazards. Can we have the next slide? Is it possible on, on, on the next screen? Oh, sorry, previous one. Yep, we all know that there's a recent flooding on 10 of September. We see that being wreak havoc in the whole KL, causing traffic jams, partly some mass transit jamming. We also see some triumphant stories about Kalisa passing through the flooding, flooding plane and so on. But, but that just reveals some key lessons to plan ahead, to develop vulnerability assessment and importantly, how we can create redundancy in the transport network in the face of where, where this evidence suggests that the frequency, extent and severity of extreme weather events is increasing around the world. We are recently doing some works in Indonesia addressing disaster risk management and climate change adoptions for mass transit systems in Indonesian cities. The surprising, only surprising element coming from, from that study to me as a Malaysian, fellow Malaysian is it is not the infamous jaw physical hazards about volcano, about tsunami, about earthquake that is actually worrying most by the, our Indonesian friends. It's actually flooding, landslide, heat wave that occur very frequently. And that shows how important for us to be able to anticipate and preparing for impacts of this. And how can we do this together as, as, as a nation? That would be almost important over the next decade or so. Given that 1990s, we have built a lot of highways. Over the last 10 years, we build a lot of mass transit systems. And probably what should we do next? Next slide, please. And, and next, next count. A key factor influencing the performance of a transport system is the level of integration, not just between the transport modes, but also in terms of the planning, design, operation. More integrated system or here, more integrated data system would offer greater flexibility, coordination and redundancy, allowing users to distribute across a diverse portfolio of transport options and to transfer easily from one mode to the other. And this always make users a lot easier to, to manage the stresses associated with the peak demand and unusual events that affect capacity in parts of the system. And to, to earth here, it would be becoming the risk-informed transport planning, spatial planning becoming critical. Because if the investments are not being planned carefully and not taking into account of information being exposure to the areas of nature hazards, the outcome will be an increase in disaster vulnerability. Next one. The, the technology can increase the flexibility of the infrastructure and proex benefits of transport providers and users on a daily basis by increasing the capability, reliability and flexibility of, of the services. Over here, we are, we are showing you across the Klan Valley. We have recently did a mobility as a service, physically study in Klan Valley. We're looking into the, the quality of the data and then going back to what Alisa said earlier on. It is, it's interesting to know that there's actually, Malaysia is not starting from, from a redback platform because we are very rich in data environment. But still, the, there is no open data being openly shared between the operators and, and authorities. But increasingly, we are seeing operators are willing to supply the data to Google Maps and move it to a lot journey planning. A lot of operators also provide real-time information and routing options via their internal applications. So quickly, next. So what we are seeing is open data is slowly being adapted, adopted by the government of Malaysia. We can go to data.gov.my. You just search, I just recently did a search. There's 26 datasets relating to bus services, 23 relating to rail. In terms of the number of datasets, they are not far away from what we see in, in London, in Singapore. But the, the issue with Malaysia has always been, how can we make good use of those data and making sure that they are, they are really useful for, for implementation and open data platform where everyone would be willing to share, promote, maintain and enhance the portal. And this might require a public body to do so. I, I, I think I'll, I'll stop here and, and listen to more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So I think, you know, now that all our panelists have gotten a chance to give their interventions, I see a lot of similar trends coming out from, you know, what everyone has been saying. Firstly, relating to data, the availability of data, you know, centralizing data and also sharing it with the people and the agencies who need it the most. I think secondly, on integration, Alisa talked about vertical and horizontal integration. And I think integration needs to happen across all the entities that are responsible for, you know, providing services. And also, you know, even the, the users, how to get their feedback. So integration is very important. And, you know, today we talked a lot about sectoral perspectives. One thing we didn't really cover is how can we think holistically as a systems approach? How to tackle these very deep-rooted challenges? Things like climate change, transport and urbanization is not things that we can talk about in silos. So I think that's a point that we can take away as, you know, we, we, as we, as we have the rest of the conversations within the space of the Malaysian Urban Forum. Okay, so I think we don't have much time. And perhaps what we can do is to take one question from the floor over here and also one question virtually. So I think I will start with our participants in the room. If anyone has a question, please introduce yourself, your organization and also if there's anyone in particular you would like to direct the question to. Yep, I think you can come up here. Pass the mic to you.
Thank you so much to the speakers. That was really great. I just have a little question, actually. Hajar Rotina, I don't know, maybe you could share on this, actually. So we, you, you mentioned about needing to plant trees and how deforestation is definitely a contributor to climate change. Where does that responsibility fall? You know, we're having too many forests being cut down, too many stories where we don't have control over what's going on. So from what I understand, Landscape Negara does cover some of the protected forests. I mean, I guess I can open this up to all, all panels as well. How do we give back control to people when, yeah, it seems like we don't have that control anymore? Thank you.
Yeah, I think maybe if Ponrotina can respond to that and then also if Sophia has any views and you'd like to come in after that.
Okay, thank you, Ashwin. Regarding the, who is the, I mean, which agency or which department is actually, is in control of the tree planting or forestry? As I said, in our system, there are many agencies and many departments is focused on a little bit of everything. So I think that's why we are here today. We need to relook into the, the whole system and we need to find the focal department, who, or focal ministry, who is really looking into the environment, the, the trees and forests. Because at the moment, there are a few departments, ministry is Ministry of Housing and Local Government, where we are, we are in, the department is. And also, we have the Ministry of Environment and we have a Department of Forest, Forestry. So there are, there are so many agencies. So we, we need to relook into the whole system. Because we cannot just, you know, we need to have the integration. As I was talking about, horizontal and vertical integration to look into this aspect.
Thank you. Sophia, you have any thoughts to add on to what Ponrotina has mentioned?
Hi. I would agree with you. It's very important to integrate all competencies regarding forestry. At the moment, even though this is very important to Malaysia, at the moment, the work we're doing in climate adaptation is not so much focused on addressing deals, but on trying to solve the problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophia. I've been looking at the questions coming in virtually and I think there's some on landscape, I think, which you've already covered. So maybe I'd just like to pose one last question to the panelists that have not yet spoken, you know, responded to the Q and A. You know, we have been talking about issues like low carbon, urban resilience for quite some time. There's been a lot of policies that have been set up. There's been a lot of programs. And maybe the question that I want to pose to you is, what are the real deep structural barriers we have yet to target? If you can offer some insights into that. So maybe we'll start with you, Ashwin.
Yes, very, very good question. I think, at least from the property sector, in the built environment, when it comes to attempting to green it, there are a lot of structural barriers. I think there are various ministries involved in the sector. Unfortunately, there isn't enough coordination, I feel. There is no one ministry that is taking full responsibility for environmental matters in the built environment. And it's not just at a federal level. As one of the speakers earlier mentioned, there's also state and local governments. There's no coordination there either, you know. So we have, for example, in, in, when it comes to energy efficiency, we have got this UBPL 38A. Basically, the Uniform Building Bylaws for Building Construction. There's been an amendment, 38A, which has incorporated some energy efficiency requirements. This has been passed at federal level, but only gazetted by three states. And within those states, only some of the local authorities have actually embraced it. So there we go, you know, and this, we've been having this debate for at least five years. So these are things, there are, there are good plans in place, yet implementation on the ground is, is a problem. But it's not just the duty of the government to drive this. As I said, push factors are one thing, the pull factors are equally important. There isn't enough awareness by the various stakeholders involved. There isn't enough, maybe, I don't know, urge or there's too much inertia to do the, to do the same thing over and over again. When there, when there are clear advantages, there is a clear business case to upgrading your buildings, but no one is doing it, you know. So if you talk about structural barriers, it is, it's, it's not just at government level. It's an individual level. It's across the board. So it's not an easy question to answer, but I've just given you one, one example. You know, we, we, policy level, lack of coordination, even at the end-user level, a lack of awareness and, and, you know, even a sort of urge to upgrade. You know, just to put it very briefly. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I think Serena, maybe you can share with us some of the elephants in the room that we need to call out.
Elephants in the room? Okay, so in terms of barriers, in terms of food, it is what we call the supply chain. And everyone is important, every player in the supply chain. So you can't say it's the government's job, it's the consumer's job, farmers need to produce more. Actually, it's everyone working together. Because the thing with food is, everyone across the supply chain, when I mean by that, I mean the farmers, the, the millers, the, the factory workers, the wholesalers, the retailers, the consumers. Everyone is important. And the, the strength of the chain is as strong as its weakest. And the, the strength of the chain is as strong as its weakest link. So everyone is important. And what can we do as consumers? The next time you go to the supermarket and you go and purchase a, a carton of egg, buy a carton of egg that has My Gap on it, Malaysia Good Agricultural Practices. The next time you buy salt or you buy sardine, purchase products that has good manufacturing practices, GMP, or MESTI, M-E-S-T-I. Or when you buy milk, HACCP. Support manufacturers and farmers that has gone through good practices to make the food safe for you. So the consumers, it's all up to you to support good sustainability, good agricultural practices, good manufacturing practices. It's, it's all of us working together. That's some of the things that can be done.
Johan, your thoughts on barriers?
I think when it comes to transportation, there is definitely a lot of barriers in Malaysia. The, I would say the, the law hanging fruit would be like, for example, why I quoted, why I, why I mentioned earlier on about making a 15-minute city, right? It doesn't really need to have a, a, a policy in place or a framework in place to do that, you know. We have to change the mindset of people, right? For us, is that how to live efficiently, you know, live within the four walls that we have. We don't need a big space, you know, we need to be efficient in, in how we design a, a house, you know, how we live in, in an environment. And many of the cases that I've studied, right, in, in the Western countries and all, how they started with low carbon mobility is within the communities themselves, you know. A few neighbourhood come together and say, hey, you know what? Let's block the street. I, I mean, I don't really practically block the street, but they make it a point to say that, you know, for certain hours, you know, kind of thing, it's only for children to play and all these things, you know, they put up some barriers and so on, so forth. So those are the, the measures that can be taken. And of course, it requires a lot of education as well, creating awareness. So I, I agree with, with my, my fellow panellists that, you know, it's, it's everybody's job, you know, and everybody come together and get things done. And that's how we kickstart a movement or how we kickstart this urban resilient.
Thank you, Johan. I think over to Alyssa for your thoughts, last thoughts, I think, keep it brief.
Yeah, I think in terms of, I understand there are really a lot of barriers everywhere. Each, you know, each city has a different one, but maybe we need to start thinking about how we can overcome certain barriers as well. What measures can we take? What guidelines can we put if we can't change the law? Like I think Ashwin mentioned the UBPL situation as well, that's something that applies to KL. But maybe we can put in certain other policies in a different manner that can try to drive building energy efficiency or maybe building energy intensity limits, for example. Everything is a work in progress, but we should definitely be looking at how to overcome the barriers where we can. And in some places where we can't, that's just going to take a bit longer. And that's why the vertical and horizontal integration will be really quite a lot of key to really making impacts, positive impacts.
Thank you. I think maybe Jay, if you can have a quick, a quick thought on this.
Yeah, I think last but not least, I think it's important for authorities and the relevant agencies to work with all stakeholders. And here, it would include the operators, the users groups, even the techno, technology groups to explore and, and, and ensure that the advantage of this shared data is, is being fully utilized and leveraged.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, just to wrap up the session, I'm going to pass the mic to Norizal for a very brief highlights of our session today and key takeaways. So over to you, Norizal.
Thank you, Nasha. I think I'm supposed to summarise seven panellists. But I think what, what I would like to briefly say here is that, first of all, thank you to all of the panellists. I think we have been listening to transportation innovation, you know, gardenation, food security, green buildings, all of these is actually key solutions towards achieving low carbon cities. So we have been talking about climate change, we have been talking about how do we solve flooding issues, you know. So these are all things that require a much bigger focus on the terms that I would like to, to actually mention here is actually the, the bigger picture of, the, the big, bigger picture of what we should actually understand, which is actually the policy support, the capacity development and also low carbon solutions. So these are all things that can actually be implemented on the ground. But then again, as we all know that cities, the way cities in Malaysia operate is that funding is limited, you know, resources is, is, is something what is, is actually one of the major challenges for cities. So these are the things that, that all of us should actually look into as to how do we solve cities' issues. Because they are actually on, on the ground, they are the frontliners, they are the one who will actually lead this so-called climate change for Malaysia. So I think with that, I pass it back to Nasha. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that really sums up the session quite nicely. So a very big thank you to all our panellists that have been joining us, to our speakers and to all of you for being so resilient and staying here until 6pm. It was a pleasure and I will now pass the floor over to Fatin from SURF for the launch of the Active Life Mobility App.